Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, and a call to order, meeting of Whitehall City Council. It is 7:00 PM, April 19th, 2022. Would you please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Present.
Dixon?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
Coniston?
Present.
Cantor?
Present.
Heck?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
President Potter.
Mr. Protem, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absent member, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Cantor and a second by Ms. Elmore to excuse the absent member. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. At this time, I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, Protem, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Coniston, a second by Cantor, for the approval of the April 5th, 2022 agenda and regular meeting minutes. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, it's our first opportunity for poll public. Anyone wishing to come forward, just give your name, address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I'll move on to standing committee reports. First is Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Protem. We will open Administration and Financial -- I'm sorry, we're opening again. Actually, I'm on the wrong day and the wrong time. We did meet last week, though, and our minutes are on file and we'll meet again next week, around 6:30.
Community and Elder Advocacy Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Protem Bailey. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week in this very room, and we intend to meet next week in this very same room.
Community Standards Enforcement Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Protem. Community Standards Enforcement met last week in my absence. Today, we have ordinance 009-2022 up for the third reading and approval. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next week.
Economic Development Chairperson Cantor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President Protem. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again here next week after 6:30.
Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Protem. Again, that's right. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week some time.
Public Safety Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Protem. Public Safety met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislation. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday at 6:30. Thank you.
Parks and Recreation Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, President Protem. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no drafts or pending legislation, and we will meet this coming Tuesday sometime around 6:30.
Thank you. Moves us to our officials and persons. We'll start off tonight with Mayor Magid.
Good evening. Going through the agenda, I would ask council to please consider the passages -- passage of ordinances 9, 12, and 16. Thank you.
City Minister, Mrs. Woodbrook is not here tonight. City Attorney Bivens is also not here tonight, but we do have Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I have for council tonight is to just inform you about Senate Bill 15, which actually, surprisingly, passed both the House and the Senate unanimously. It's a revision to the Ohio Revised Code, and this actually impacts Treasurer Alexander and me specifically. The new verbiage in the Ohio Revised Code states that the treasurer of a municipal corporation or city auditor or other officer of a municipal corporation having the duties of a municipal treasurer or a city auditor shall not be held liable for a loss of public funds when the officer has performed all official duties required of the officer with reasonable care, but shall be liable only when a loss of public funds results from the officer's negligence or other wrongful acts. So basically, what this means is, prior to this, Shaq and I could have been held personally responsible for anything that happened in the office, whether or not it was done by us, you know, or through any, you know, unintended measure. So it's a little protection that I'm quite thankful that they passed, and again, I'm shocked it went unanimous through both houses.
Very good. Public Safety, or Director of Public Safety, Mr. Gray is not here tonight, but our Treasurer, Alexander, is here, and I'm sure you would like to share how happy you are about Senate Bill 15.
That's actually, uh, thank you, President Protem. That is actually news to me, so thank you, Auditor Quinzel, for sharing that. I have nothing more to add, other than I would like to go on the record and just say thank you to Auditor Quinzel and everybody in the Auditor's Department for helping me get adjusted and acquainted with how things are done and making my life a little bit easier as I grow into the role. So I just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you.
Well, from us, you know that we're excited and happy that you are with us.
Sure.
Talented young man, in my opinion. There have been no official reports filed in this council office since the last meeting. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we had the agenda for April 11th, 2022, VZBA meeting, the minutes for April 11th, 2022, VZBA meeting, the minutes of the April 7th, 2022, Whitehall Planning Commission meeting. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any draft add-on legislation?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Under third reading tonight, we have ordinance 9, 2022. It's amending Section 933.11, titled "Storage of Garbage and Other Refuge of the Streets and Public Services Code of the City of Whitehall."
President Protem, I would like to introduce ordinance 009-2022 and move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Smith and a second by Cantor for the introduction and adoption of ordinance 9, 2022. Any discussion? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance 9, 2022 has been adopted. That is all we have under third reading. Under second reading, we have ordinance number 11, 2022. Authorizing the adoption of the May 2022 replacement pages to the codified ordinance of the City of Whitehall. Ordinance 11, 2022 is being read by title only. Ordinance 12, 2022. Authorizing an improvement in fund transfer, any amount of $60,000 from the General Fund 101 to the Capital Improvement Fund 311. Authorizing an improvement in supplemental appropriation, any amount of $60,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund 311 to the Capital Improvement Expense Account 31.00.54000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Protem, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 12, 2022, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Coniston, a second by Heck for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance 12, 2022. Any discussion? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 12, 2022.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Coniston, a second by Heck to adopt ordinance 12, 2022. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance 12, 2022 has been adopted. Under first reading, we have ordinance 13, 2022. It's amending 161.11A and B, titled "Legal Holidays of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Whitehall." Ordinance 13, 2022 is being read by title only. Ordinance 16, 2022. Authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation, any amount of $18,854 from unappropriated monies in the General Fund 101 to the Property Maintenance Expense Account
Mr. President Protem, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 16, 2022. Move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Coniston, a second by Dixon for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance 16, 2022. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck? Smith?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance 16, 2022.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Coniston, a second by Dixon for the adoption of ordinance 16, 2022. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ordinance 16, 2022 has been adopted. Brings us to our second opportunity to poll public. Bashful tonight. We'll move on to community decor.
We have a Safer Whitehall Town Hall tomorrow, well, I'm sorry, Thursday, April 21st, at 6:00, New Life Church.
We have a Family Earth Day Project on Friday, April 22nd, and Saturday, April 23rd, at the Whitehall Parks. You can sign up online, on Facebook, or the website. We also have Recycle Drop Off Day on Saturday, April 23rd, from 11:00 to 2:00, at Whitehall Community Park Parking Lot. There's a list on Facebook and the website of what is acceptable to bring. There's also Unlimited Trash Collection Day on Wednesday, May 4th.
Okay. Anything else? We'll move on to poll council, and tonight, we'll start off with Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Protem Bailey. First of all, thank you for the individual that has come out and watched the proceedings in person, and I want to thank everyone watching from home as well. I have a little statement that I would like to read. I wasn't going to say anything about the tax levy currently headed to the ballot, but seeing the large campaign pushing it, I felt a responsibility to speak up from another perspective. As some may have seen, I put out an official statement against Issue 10, which I felt wrapped up my feelings on the matter succinctly. I stand by that statement still. I'm opposed to normalizing paying for any staff outside of the realm of the budget. It sets a precedent where, instead of balancing the budget as is needed with what we have, we can just put those needs over into an additional side door tax, as we did when we freed up more money for the budget by getting rid of trash service or putting water sewer needs into a utility surcharge. I feel the hiring of more officers should remain within the parameters of the budget, and if we simply can't afford cuts to make that happen, or we can't afford it currently, then we simply do without it until we're better able to fund them. As well, positioning that need outside the budget alongside the need for expanding and upgrading the police station puts the citizens into having to make an unfair choice with the department they so wholeheartedly support. I don't believe there is anyone that doesn't believe the police station is in need of expansion and upgrade. That alone on a levy, even despite the current economic climate, I believe, would have found much larger support. However, coupled with the hiring of six new officers, that which has been traditionally done via the budget, as well as making the tax levy permanent, is simply too much to ask. With inflation clobbering everyone and the utility surcharge beginning this year, the city topping all that off with a permanent side door tax is just too much. Finally, I just want to say, particularly as someone who supports and is pro-law enforcement, as stated in my campaign literature this past fall, to be against this tax levy does not mean that you are anti-police. I personally want both things for the police, but not wrapped up in the same package, and certainly not as a permanent tax. Separate them into the budget for the officers and a tax levy for the expansion and upgrade, and you've got a ringing endorsement from me. Kept as their package now, and I simply, fiscally, cannot endorse Issue 10. Given this, a no vote then does not mean you are against the police, but rather are concerned in a fiscal way. It is your job as citizens, using critical thinking skills, to wade through information out there, look at your own wallets, look at the stats, and make that personal decision on whether this tax levy is feasible in its current form. Either way, I urge you all to vote your own consciences by two weeks today, May 3rd. Thank you, Mr. President Protem.
That brings us to Elmore.
Thank you, President Protem. Thank you for those that are viewing on social media. Also, I would just like to reiterate that the Safer Whitehall Town Hall meeting that will happen on Thursday, April 21st, has a wide range of topics, and if anybody has any concerns with the Issue 10 and Safer Whitehall Levy, I would urge you to sign up for this town hall. I would urge you to show up and make your opinions heard and to receive the information from the horse's mouth, so to speak, because the hiring of more staff and officers has always been done through the budget, and implying the process different than that is incorrect and is misleading. And so, in order for all of our residents in our community to understand exactly what is going to happen in Issue 10, I support you going to the meeting. I will also state that we have a growing city, and with a growing city comes a lot with a growing city, and we already know from our survey that safety was the number one aspect for this community, and we want to keep it like that. And so, therefore, I'm a proponent for Issue 10. There are things that are going to happen through Issue 10, and I think our input and our voice, our voices need to be heard, everybody's voice, whether you're a proponent or opponent or you just are an interested party, you need to know what this really entails. And with that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Chairperson Coniston, Councilperson Coniston, I'm sorry.
Thank you, President Protem. On a completely different note, this week is Volunteer Appreciation Week, and I want to appreciate all of the volunteers that we have here in Whitehall and the surrounding community, but especially the Whitehall Community Soldiers Association that just does wonderful things, and I'm very proud to work beside them and know them. I also would like to wish many of my friends a happy Passover and a happy Ramadan. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to Councilperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and kudos to what Councilperson Coniston just said. Good selection there. Hello, everybody. Thanks for watching tonight. I greatly appreciate it. Mr. Quinzel, it's good to see you again. It's nice to see everybody without masks, and I know we have differences of opinions on that. And I was out for a couple of weeks, and I'm sorry nobody did this, and when I came back, I didn't, but I want to wish Whitehall Shell, the corner of Hamilton and Broad Street, Happy belated 45th Birthday. You are just a pillar of our community, just beautiful, just the way it's run, Tim and Vicki, and Vicki, your dad, Larry, I hope you're watching. I think you probably are, and I'm sorry that I missed you my first week when I got back two weeks ago, but I wasn't going to miss you tonight. And you know, I only use Shell gas in all of my vehicles. Since 1994, I've been a devoted customer of yours, and that's a nice plug for them I might as well add as well. So, with that said, yes, with that said, we do have an issue coming up here in the primary in May. I think everybody knows that I am pro-police. I've been endorsed by the FOP. I can honestly say I'm the only person sitting at this table right now, all the way around, that has had the FOP's endorsement 100%, and I greatly appreciate that for that. What one of our members said tonight, that it should come out of the budget, it actually is, and it will be budgeted next week, because what the levy generates is not enough, because I know that we're going to be putting in, in the budget, $635,000, which somebody admitted to say, so it's not all coming from the levy. It is coming from our tax base here. Also, when this was introduced, we had somebody introduce that and somebody second that, and we had a meeting and talked about that prior to. Mr. Bailey introduced that, and Mr. Dixon seconded it. So that could have been, you could have said no, we all voted no, we all voted yes, but it voted yes 100%. Everybody was in agreement. On 111 at the committee meeting here, Mr. Dixon made the statement that he spoke with the chief and agreed with everything, what they needed and that they should get, but what you're saying here kind of tips the scales one way, so I don't know where you're coming from, and I'm fully aware of your so-called blog. And then on 21, when you polled city council, when they polled council, you looked at, and you said, "I agree with everybody up here," which means us, I'm assuming that's us, everybody that's sitting up here, and how much you're for the police, and you know that the community is for the police, and they hope that the community continues to support the police. I do, too, and I support Issue 10, so I just wanted to make that statement, just so people know, we are budgeting $635,000 next year in the budget when this would start. So he neglected to say that. So I want to thank everybody for watching. Girls' dad knows you're watching, too, and I haven't forgot you. I love you. I'll see you in a little bit. That's all I have to say, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. And it brings us to Councilperson Heck.
Thank you, President Protem. Thank you for the two people that are now in the audience, and those that are watching from home. I did not know that it was volunteer week, Karen, so thank you for the heads up, and thank you for all the volunteers that are in Whitehall, but I agree that WCCA does a fabulous job supporting Whitehall, so thank you to all those volunteers. I know they work long and hard, and I hope to see many of you, if you have questions, coming out to the town hall meeting or reaching out to Chief Crispin to get your questions answered. I hope to see you on Thursday. I plan on attending before my son's tee ball game, but that is all I have.
Shot.
He was close. It's close.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. Councilperson Smith.
Thank you, President Protem. It's always fun being last. Thank you for everybody in person and also those watching online, and there are a lot of viewpoints shared tonight, and to second what Joanna said, you know, there are options to get out in person, have your questions asked, and if there's one thing I've found in my years in Whitehall, people are willing to talk and answer questions and discuss. You just have to reach out, so I would encourage everybody to do that. I'm looking forward to a warmer week, and I hope everyone else is as well. I'm tired of being cold.
All right. Well, thank you all for your comments. Yeah, actually, I was going to come to you in a little bit. Go ahead, you can go first.
Since Councilman Dixon brought up the Issue 10 levy, I would just like to remind everyone, and then also, Councilmember Cantor brought up the fact that the city will still be paying for the police department as well. Actually, we'll be paying approximately $750,000 to $800,000 a year with the levy paying for some of this as well. So it's just, it's not the whole levy paying for what we need. The city is also paying for it as well. Now, one of the components is that we have a unique opportunity to get a federal grant this year for police officers. Now, the way this works is the first year, the feds will pay 75% of the salary of these extra police officers, three police officers. Then the next year, they'll pay 50%, and the year after that, 25%, and that we have to commit to keeping these police officers for a certain number of years after in order to not have to pay the grant back. If we don't get this Issue 10 passed, we'll not be able to get this grant, and it's a great opportunity to actually save taxpayer dollars and to have more people on the force, and I would just hate to pass up this type of opportunity. Also, I think it's important to remember that Whitehall is doing an incredible job, especially with the violence that surrounds us by another city, but what we're doing in Whitehall is incredible, and we have to keep pace in order to make sure that we keep on top of all the crime that's going on. And unfortunately, I feel like if we cannot get additional police officers, that our citizens will suffer, and I think it's important that everyone, everyone, if they can, come to the Safer Whitehall meeting, ask for questions in person, just like Councilwoman Elmore asked, and Heck said the same thing, and also Councilwoman Smith, that you can get your questions answered. I'm sure people have a lot of questions about this. And I will tell you that I have voted yes on issues before that I may not have fully agreed with, maybe I only agreed with a part of it, but I looked at the bigger picture of the good that it would do the community. And I set those other things aside because I knew that there was good in there and that certain things were needed. So I'm just saying that sometimes there's things that we don't like every part of something, but that the greater good is most important. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Now I have nothing to say. I should have gone first.
I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate everything you said. So that puts the numbers at the now between just what we've heard tonight, the levy is somewhere around 1.5 million. I'm hearing numbers that make it a 50-50 split, you know, tax dollars and then city dollars coming together and doing something that, and I know you'll remember, Mayor, because you've been here quite a while, too. I can remember serving as a legislator, making those tough decisions you talked about under Mayor Wolf's. The time he had in office, and what I tell people from history of myself and thinking about is, when Mayor Wolf took office as mayor, which was a repeat as mayor, he stabilized this city because we were in a tailspin, and anybody that's lived there here your whole life, you'd know this. So in those four years, he stabilized everything and stopped that tailspin, started putting key people in key places, and in fact, took our auditor and talked her into running for mayor, and that would be you, Kim. What you have done in the last What you have done in the last how many years, my math won't be good, but, and this is why I'm bringing this up, is we've worked hard to improve all these services, even if it's the physical structure of the police station, which I really didn't like, because the project was too small, but it was cheap enough, we could do it on city money. But we've done all these things, and you've put good leadership in a lot of different positions over in the police department, fire department, economic development, just even in city services, everything has improved, so it's taken us ten, twelve years to get to this point. So as a legislator, I look at this levy, no, nobody wants to pay more in taxes, but what can we do today to avoid what we just looked at twelve, fifteen years ago? We need to be looking ten, fifteen years ahead. It's investing in everything that's happening good today, all these developments out of economic development, what needs to support that is good police and fire and city services. Things are happening, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening, hasn't even come up out of the ground yet. And if you look at nationally, I think several of you talked about safety figures, I think even the city attorney did in our last public meeting, yes, some stuff, crime rates have gone up in Whitehall, but it's way under the national average, and there's a reason for that, because this community supports its police department, and I don't want to use like the term, you know, defund police, I think all that was just political horse crap anyway, but as legislators sitting here today, I'm going to look at what is going to take care of my grandkids, so if they choose, like my kids chose, to have a house and raise a family here in Whitehall, what is going to help my grandchildren that decide to stay here, and that's, you know, twelve, fifteen, twenty years out. We have to make the tough decision today, even though it's uncomfortable, because you might have two or three people in a year going, "I can't afford to raise, I can't afford for my taxes to go up." Can you afford for Whitehall to slip back into what it was? We used to be the suburb, everybody would say, "Oh, you're from Whitehall," you'd have to downplay it, like, you know, "We're not special people, it's just a great community," to, "Oh, you're from Whitehall, like you don't want to live there?" Well, it's coming back. There's a lot of people excited to move into Whitehall. Heck, these house prices, what they are, you can't find a house for sale that stays on the market. This is the time to support for the future. This is the time to think about the tough decision and commit, and what I'm really proud of, I know that that tax money would be utilized, what is purposed for, and it's definitely going to improve what already with this administration and this council and those before have done in the last ten to fifteen years. So I support the levy, and I appreciate everybody expressing their feelings on it, because everybody has an opinion and you're allowed to share it, and I think I'm done talking, and I apologize. So with that...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Cantor, a second by Elmore to adjourn. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
I have to be, you're sitting next to me. Are you kidding me?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.